Current year drops eighteen percent over current year. Post-employment benefits, five point four million. Mister Retella, um, for oh five oh six was four hundred and twenty-two dollars per dental. Now it's five hundred and ten dollars. Hard, uh, hard figure. Mister Uriah, we tried to negotiate renewal to be the very end. Uh, predicted a thirteen percent increase. Mister Chenisey's retirement benefits, pay as you go portion, four point one million. City's required contribution is seven million. We're doing one point two million. Sadi asked, uh, what is the total unfunded accrued liability? Seventy-three point four million liability and Board of Education is twenty million. Increased by, increasing by one point two million a year. How long until they were, they will be fully funded? Uh, amortized over thirty years. Union welfare. Health insurance with team, for our Teamsters, rates are negoti- negotiated hourly rates, six dollars and twenty-six cents an hour for every employee that is a Teamster. Insurance. Professional services going down to seventy thousand dollars. Evaluation is done, so it can take, so it will be taken out. Not do again until next year. Insurance up. Volunteer fire, fighter policy, increased, uh, benefits, deductible expenses and W dash C increase. Mister Taberstak, does, uh, auto include police and fire and public works? Yes. Mister Retella, is that what we actually pay out for deductibles? Yes. Interest on debt. Included all interest payments, uh, for outstanding bonds and for bonds sales planned for July. Interest on debt school. Current interest payments and other bond sales in July. Redemption of bond, principal payment of current bond, pay down five hundred thousand dollars a year. Redemption on debt school, um, payments due on outstanding school board. No, on school, outstanding school bonds. Contingency. One point three million outstanding labor contracts. Mister Sadi asked roughly how much is divided, uh, Mister Uriah gave him a percentage. Capital. No referendums next year. Five hundred thousand dollars in note and five hundred fifty thousand dollars for loseup. Uh, listed out of page three thirty-four. New vehicles for health. Five for police. Replace roof at public works. Uh, renovation at public works complex. Fifty thousand for spill, uh, prevention control at public utilities. D E P requirements. One hundred thousand dollars in paying paving and damp, and drainage. Seventy-five thousand Richter Park Authority. Master plan, Park Avenue School. Burners at Millbridge School. A hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars to white, white streets, white streets, streetscape repairs to field at Rogers Park. Mister Sadi, with regrets to, with regards to Richter Park master plan. Do you recall total of ma- of Tarawa master plan? Mister Uriah said, city paid for that update. Don't know the cost. Mister Sadi said seventy-five thousand feels this is high. Do we know who will be doing this? Mike McGlocklin said Jane Didona. Mister Chenisey, what type of vehicles purchased or leased? Out of this line, uh, they will be purchased. Out of this line item, they will be purchased. Mister Johnson moved to accept the general to, uh, government, accept the general government to budget as presented by Mayor Bowden. Mister Retella seconded. Mayor, uh, motion passed unanimously. Mister Retella mo- moved to adjourn. Mister Johnson seconded. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting adjourned at six fifty-five P M. Respectfully submitted. Calling Bassel Chair, Jim Johnson, Paul Retella, Lynn Taberstak and Charlie Timbello.
Counselor, Education Budget Council, Associate.
The Education Budget Committee met March twentieth, two thousand and seven, at seven thirty in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. In attendance were Chairman Mary Saraceno, committee members Colin Stanley, Fred Visconti, Jane Diggs and Bob Riley. Also in attendance were council members Joe Calvo and Shay Negercha, and Mayor Bowden, Executive official. Representing the city was Assistant Director of Finance Dan Garrett, representing the Board of Education, with the Director of Finance Ali Olango, Superintendent of Schools Sal Pasquarela, and School Board members Richard Janelle and Irving Fox, members of the public. Counselor Paul Rotello arrived at seven forty-five. Saraceno asked Mister Olango to make his presentation. Mister Olango said that the Board of Education approved a one hundred and seven million, one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollar budget. The major cost estimates are in the areas of utilities, transportation, healthcare and the magnet school operations. Most of their expenses, approximately eighty cents on the dollar, are contractual expenses tied to various contracts. Doctor Pasquarela thanked the committee for inviting them to the meeting. He stated that the salary and benefits make up approximately seventy percent of the budget. Stated that there are grants that help although Title One money is in jeopardy. It is based on income and need. There is a shift in demographics in the town. Six of our schools have prayer reduced lunch. The Head Start funding is in jeopardy also, and they are looking for other venues of income. The Magnet School had forty open seats and lost funding in startup caused funds. The City of Danbury is optimum funding for us. He stated that if the government rails budget passes, they will get grant funds. He anticipates that the Magnet School will be at capacity by next year and that the requirement, retirements will help out with the hiring of new teachers at lower wage. He feels that the budget is about what other cities are using. Mister Janelle spoke in favor of the Magnet School. He stated that they have startup costs right now and will become fully funded. There is a possibility that Ridgefield and Bevel will join. School is a source of pride for Danbury. Mister Fox said that it took four to five months to put the budget together after Mister Olango's work. He represents the cost of going forward. Mister, Doctor Pasquarela said that they have put a limit on forming new classes. There are five new positions district wide, three point five of them at the Magnet School. He may move some responsibilities around. Overall, he felt they would be fine with the money that they are asking for. Mayor Bowden said that the Board of Education's actual request was for a seven point one percent increase. The city reduced it by one million dollars using the salary gap between the teachers retiring and new hires to create a buffer. As for the governor's funding, she is proposing to give Danbury five point one million and we are giving the school six point one million. If the governor doesn't give the ci- city the money, um, we will have to readjust. The state works on their budget during May and our charter says that we have to have a budget by May first. The current proposal by the government has an increase to education. We may want to pass a resolution asking Hartford to fund education. About fifty percent of the state's budget is based on the governor's numbers. The numbers will have to be closely reviewed once they come from Hartford. Mister Saraceno asked for questions from committee members. Mister Riley asked Doctor Pasquarela about the population bulge at the middle school and if staffing will be a problem. Doctor Pasquarela said that middle to high school is a problem. Classes fill up and they are staffed to the top. A full-time teacher at the middle school, they have a seven period, uh, de- seven periods a day. Over a hundred and eighty days, people are teaching the same amount of days and the same number of students. Mister Visconti asked, how many students are at Rogers Park Middle School? It was stated that there are one thousand one hundred and three. He also asked if there are any current ongoing contractual negotiations. Doctor Pasquarela said not at this time. They are in the first year of a three-year contract with the teachers union. Mister Olango responded that they are currently open with the Secretary of Group and that they are in the middle year of the custodians contract. The busing contract is one more year. They are going out for RFPs on the bus contract this summer. Mister Diggs asked if the Magnet School would always remain a K five model. She also asked that if we are lacking in student recruitment at the school, how would they propose to bring in more students? She also asked how diverse the school population was. Doctor Pasquarela said that the student makeup reflects the city's diversity as in our other schools. It brings other towns in line with the diversity reflected in Danbury. They are in compliance. The school is built as a K five school and it could change. There is a Magnet School Advisory Board for the Danbury Board of Education that would make that decision. As for recruiting, the principal does presentations at each of the schools. They need other towns to fulfill their numbers. Brookfield got all of their students in and Ridgefield is very interested. Mister Visconti asked if there is an overall increase in teacher problems or impacts with immigration issue in Danbury. Doctor Pasquarela said that there is a bulge with additional students. Immigration enriches diversity but also takes away resources and they are not complying with teacher ratios. There is a need to put students into programs. Mister Diggs moved to approve the education budget as presented by the city. Seconded by Mister Visconti. Mister Saraceno said that the budget allocated, one hundred and six million, one hundred and six million and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Mister Riley said that that is a good budget. He appreciated the Board of Education working with the city. Motion passed unanimously. Mister Stanley moved to adjourn. Seconded by Mister Visconti. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting adjourned at ten P M. Respectfully submitted. Mayor Saraceno Chair, Colin Stanley, Jane Diggs, Robert Riley, Fred Visconti.
Thank you, Counselor. Public Works Budget Committee, uh, Counselor Bassel. Well, uh, stand corrected. Councilman Casumpis.
Thank you. Public Works Budget Committee met on March thirteenth, two thousand and seven, at six P M in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. In attendance were Chairman Casumpis, committee members Johnson, Negercha, Chenisey and Stanley. Also in attendance were Director of Finance and Personnel, Mister Uriah, Director of Public Works, Antonio Iderola, Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrett, Director of Recreation, Nick Plannus, and Council members Calvo, Seaver, McMahon, Rotello, Bassel and Taberstak, and members of the public. Mister Chenisey asked if Mister Iderola gave an overview for the review of the department changes. Mister Casumpis said he was going to have Mister Uriah review first, as done in past practice. Mister Uriah read from the narratives and explained the functions of the line items. Public buildings added a foreman position and a plumber in the case of the three eleven. Monthly charges, utility services, seventy thousand dollars. Request moved over, request moved over to park buildings and cleaning services and office services. Mister Chenisey asked what buildings are in code thirteen forty, public works? Ancillary buildings, general maintenance for all buildings. Staff support to maintain the buildings. Mister Taberstak asked about the compliance for underground storage removal. Mister Uriah said there is no money to study. City Hall building. Full-time maintenance for gym. Need to update fire alarm panel for security. Safety equipment, new item. Mister Casumpis asked if we have to defil- defil- defibrillator for the city? Yes, on the second floor. Mister Taberstak, any clean energy money in there? Mister Bassel, cleaning services, who does background checks? Who pays for this? Mister Uriah, custom care, does all our cleaning? Mister Iderola said they are bonded. Library building. Significant increases in utilities. New holiday lights, use more power. Cleaning services. Explorer have custom care of building when library is open. And it's too expensive, not doing it this year. Police station building. Utilities increase. Mister Chenisey asked, is the same cleaning services, custom care? Eighty thousand cut from utility service. Why didn't they get it? Mister Uriah said they wanted major upgrades, but it is preferred due to new headquarters being built. Senior center building. Slight increases in some line items, some line items. Mister Bassel, is this for both buildings? Yes. Old library building. Increase in cleaning services to have custom care, clean the building, place carpet in Marion Anderson recital hall. Mister Stanley. No need to increase heating fuel? Mister Uriah said we should be okay. Mister Chenisey, who else uses the building? Answer, Danbury Using Center? Mister Retella. Asked, how is the roof in the old library? Mister Iderola said they'll look into it. Park building. Carved out expenditures from park maintenance department and put them here. Cleaning services for Hatter Park banquet hall. Outside services for electric services. Lights on field, plumbing for D H S stadium. Winter ice break park, maintain building. Increase to allow more maintenance equipment. Other, other to new A C, waste parks, recreation office? Mister Chenisey asked Mister Iderola, what is your goal? The reason, what's the reason for doing this? Mister Iderola said majority of the maintenance was being farmed out to private contractors. But since we have expertise in-house, do these services better in ha- in-house and at better control. That is the tone for most of the organization. Mister Chenisey said park department was to move. Mister Iderola said removing the director and secretary out of Hatter Park, probably move to garage in Rogers Park and giving more opportunities at One Memorial to move Veterans Council and other things there. Not costing anyone. Mister Chenisey, once park gets wrecked, moves out of Hatter, the goal is to possibly release it to a third party? Yes, we're preparing, uh, RFP to manage the entire complex and possibly the building. Making one person responsible for the management and possible damage for events held there. Should be a profitable venture, venture for the city. Are the expenditures for One Memorial Drive part of this budget? Mister Iderola said it's part of the public building's budget right now. Mister Bassel said parks used to clean Hatter Park. Mister Iderola said we have a private company that comes in and cleans up after the event. Mister Taberstak asked if Mister I- Iderola could enumerate park building to Mister Iderola and give her a list. Councilman Sadi joined the meeting at six thirty. Highways. Salary has two changes. Secretary for Director of Public Works and a truck driver. Eliminated part-time salary. Slight increase across several line items. Mister Chenisey asked regarding overall operational changes. Mister Iderola wants to create a new public service division of public works with all mechanics and a tree division and park ma- maintenance would be managed by highway superintendent. Trying to strike a balance in all three divisions. Mister Chenisey asked if the drainage study has been completed. He stands doing a study with all discharge points regarding storm discharge, part of the D V D requirement. Do you feel there are enough funds to address the dr- drainage issue? Mister Uriah said the money for drainage comes out of bond money. Restorative supplies, this is not where the cleaning company supplies, and other orders, toilet paper, et cetera. Answers, yes. State aid funded by town. Road aid money we give to the state to use the ductors, noirs. Snow and ice removal. We don't pay for storm mail, so we give the place a lump sum, but a true duty. Few do not get the lump sum. Street lighting increasing five percent. Mister Chenisey, we have milestones for snowplowing regarding ice control material reviewed by I O S U R O stockpile. Mister Iderola said we stockpile five P M of the season. Mister Chenisey asked, hopefully have left about five thousand feet regardless. We're very close to the summer. Last year we spent three hundred and twenty-five thousand and we're budgeting the same, but allocating it differently. Utility service includes parking lights in all city lots. No, basically, our streetlights. Mister, that, Mister Bassel asked if we're using the Magnet School? Mister Iderola said we're investigating all Texas products. Mister Taberstak, there's street lighting involved traffic lights. No, they're now in the air. This is demand. Magnet School go down in porticoes. Mister Sadi, distinction between amounts requested and what the mayor gave? Mister Uriah said it's based on revenue. Ice control always bonds three hundred and point five thou- three hundred and twenty thousand. We have higher revenue, so we can allocate. Mister Chenisey, given, given the growth of the west side of Danbury, would you consider putting a storage place for a truck over there? Mister Iderola said we cover the region area next to the airport. It's critical and we're looking to buy temporary shit and cover salt and sand. Park maintenance and borders to be staffed changes. We decided to form a twenty two facilities. Will need two park maintenance and added a labor park consolidation over overtime's term. Cleaning services and office services moved to new apartment. Cleaning moved to new apartment. Heating moved to other allocated to new apartment. Sewer assessment for Danbury and Hatter Park out of this account. Mister Chenisey asked elaborate on major objectives, how do we count for step? Mister Iderola said we program the changes into the schedule and use our manpower to get them down. What do we need to do for the government games? Extra line in the fields, extra garbage pedal, additional field prep, all are in this budget. Kendall Park, lots of tree work, removing dead leaves, plus replanting trees. Mister Casumpis said any Kendall department can do the bill for it. Kendall, light authority, state can lead on this. Mister Bassel asked, full ground and stuff? Mister Iderola said we have lump sums right now. Mister Taberstak, uh, nothing changes until July two thousand and eight. Starting to get ready now, some truckload to, to work up. Mister Perkins joins the meeting at six fifty P M. Public building maintenance and repair, Board of Education buildings, have Magnet School to computerize the M F system? Mister Retella, will new education building in South Park be under your department to take care of? Yes. Liable plans are in the works. We're hoping to get more funds, perhaps donations. Equipment maintenance, outside services, increase in cell phone to be legal? Most line items stay the same or increased length? We will purchase new radios for some vehicles. Mister Chenisey, Chenisey asked, what building we're talking about? Building number four and public works complex. Why is it not all combined for the other buildings? It's on a separate year, separate building. Recycling and solid, solid waste. Majority of dollars spent to maintain the land, building permits for year of fees, adoption of chemicals, we don't have to operate, we should rather than a water. Mister Taberstak, what portion of the outside is paying A W B eight amount of cost? Answer, sixty two thousand. Mister Sadi, if the marshals decide to sell off A W B eight, sixty two thousand include seaming project. We know what we spend subsidizing seaming project. We ask Corporation Council about the ability, amount of cost contract if A W B is sold. Mister Bassel said the mayor's asking for more clean city days, base one in there? Answers, yes. Engineering department, staff rechange, new construction manager and employee one engineer for water pump. Increase posted slightly, increase training slightly, dial to weak traffic, it's near same level. Mister Chenisey asked for ongoing changes to read. Mister Iderola said focus. Responsibility for engineering is trying to develop a G I S mapping system in city street opening front of, brought into this department. Administering, administering all public facilities, engineering projects, dedicating people and changing the process to make a better handle on possible forty-seven projects out there. Dedicate people on the construction side to administrate construction projects. Mister Chenisey, G I S mapping budget, trying to allocate people how to implement the system. This is the beginning. The following years will request a funding of this. Construction manager has oversight to third-party contractors. Yes, that is only ten. What about the management issues? There's a dedicated engine and personnel. Mister Taberstak, different forms stating highways, curbs and walks? It's for the traffic engineer to do this work. Mister Taberstak asked, where are the traffic signals? Mister Retella, highway, curves and walks, water retention. Technical flat, pumping and we have only about a for Danbury traffic. Recreation department, no staffing changes, part-time salaries for all summer programs, professional safe summer programs, day owed, soccer, et cetera. Cleaning services for bank recall and office contributions is franchise fee to Danbury Westerners. Mister Chenisey asked Mister Plannus, what new programs will you implement? Mister Plannus said the summer program has been a big success, looking to get the fields ready, looking for new programs, perhaps for disabled children, looking to reach out to the ethnic communities. Mister Chenisey, do you recognize any problems to tackle first? Mister Plannus said a lot of outdoor facilities need work, hard to shut down outdoor things to repair. Mister Stanley, with the shortest of fields, any chance that football players will use baseball fields? Answer, no. Additional lights and stuff will be installed to help. New field abroad. Mister Perkins asked if there's any thought to putting in artificial turf at high-use field? Mister Plannus said there's a great benefit to turf, but the cost is extensive. The actual cost to maintain a grass field versus turf field, seven times years timeframe to get that cost. Mister Bassel asked if the water will be recycled at the spray cake, sprayscape? Mister Iderola said recycling the water is not a good idea based on other towns' uses. Mister Taberstak, a lot of expenditures going out to provide these items. Revenue from gate fees and event changes, do they come back to this line item? No, the revenue goes into the general fund. Tarawa park authority. Mister Sadi asked, what proportion of revenue comes from Tarawa? Including complex, where is the money coming from? Danbury neighborhood fund? Is there a time limit to use the funds? If so, then funds will be used elsewhere. Mister Uriah said there's no time limit. The order will need to change if funds are used for something else and would require a referendum. Cultural commission. Mister Chenisey asked, does any money can be used for Charles eyes in the past? Mister Uriah said we give them a lump sum if we don't track how it's spent. Lake Kenosha, no change. Eyes is still re- performing arts. Fifty thousand dollar funding considered transition funding as new board is putting together a new season and fundraising. Mister Taberstak asked, does this budget include the seventy-five thousand of bidder assets? No. Coming into the council and ankle through that. Mister Sadi asked where the narrative is? No board in place to do this narrative yet. Whether or not it is transition money is up to the council. Mister Sadi said, Mister Sadi said he's trying to understand the basis for the funding without having a narrative. Mister Chenisey, would fifty thousand be spent all at once? The money is there, they need it. Sewer fund, no employees north by Viola Water, funding for one study only. Outside is to pay Viola, Viola payment in lead of nitrogen payments. Heat's rising, which is why the funding was approved in bonds for nitrogen removal study. Professional services are costs associated with tax office and billing. Insurance is three percent. Bond interest on current bonds and future bond sale in July. Mister Chenisey, uh, asked on the nights of studies, status, projects, design, got standard approval, money's in the budget. Mister Bassel, the city borrowed ten million. Where'd it go? Put into the general fund and Q taxes below. We're giving nine million to discover where's the money going. We close to the staffing levels. Do we cost the city that much to operate the sewers place and blockages? Water pump. Redemption of debt, all existing bonds, no additional bonds next year. Most line items kept flat. Four and no change? Need by vehicles percent approved? Property taxes to other municipalities, small bond sale over the summer. Chemicals significantly increased forty percent. Increase in cost next year. Staff rechange. It's critical that the department becomes proactive, instructing me to maintain the mass infrastructure instead of being reactive problem. One crew for sanitary sewer and one crew for water Detroit. Uh, excuse me. One crew for sanity sewer and one crew for water. Help to maintain vast number of easements the city has, overgrown, et cetera. Administration deploying the engineer foreman and park ma- park maintenance here. Insurance increased. Creating energy fuel going up, tires and miscellaneous expenses up slightly. Mister Chenisey, major objectives, install west side board storage tanks that we deserve. The tanks are putting up the city's needs. The west side, stats of hyenas, we're down to about eighty out right now. Additional crews should reduce this number substantially. Mister Chenisey moved to set up the public works budget as adjourned tonight. Mister seconded by Mister Johnson. Most of staffed unanimously. Mister Nag set moved to adjourn. Seconded by Mister Johnson, most of staffed unanimously. Adjourned at eight P M. Respectfully submitted, term next month.
Do you know front curse is ahead?
Thank you, Your Honor. In reference to, uh, Grant Agency's Budget Report F that was waived, um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have a transfer made from line item five oh one oh point six oh oh three Hispanic center, uh, in two, two sections. Twenty thousand dollars to the American Red Cross, uh, line item five oh one oh zero 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 zero, um, to be used exclusively for Danbury residents as required in the report. And five thousand dollars to T B I Co., line item five zero one zero dot six zero six eight.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the, uh, elected official salaries, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a salary increase for all local salary elected, elected officials in the amount of a three percent effective on December first, two thousand and seven, and additional three percent effective on December first, two thousand and eight. Uh, specifically, I'm making reference to city clerk, county clerk, uh, treasurer and the mayor's official. That's correct.
In meeting Government One, I thought it was specified that you weren't going to get a written to you. You can put that in your question.
I didn't, uh, I didn't propose to raise your office of mayor at City Hall. As the building council, the council decides and I want to, uh, maybe the office of mayor to sort of, uh, to sort of do that. So, just, just what we mentioned. I had a question. I just have whatever you have to talk about.
And that, my question would be, where is it coming from?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to include in that, uh, matter of fact, it would have to be a different motion at this time, I'm sorry, Your Honor, it would have to be a different motion. On, on the assistant clerk would be a full-time position. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to include in the, the general government one committee report, uh, to make the part-time assistant clerk a full-time position, increase the line item from eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars to thirty thousand dollars even, increase the associated attending costs to be drawn out of contingency. Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, I find myself defending my position on this and hating the position in the assistant city clerk to part-time. Prior to Jean's unfortunate accident, things in the office were running very smoothly. I was very happy with the progress that was being made in the part-time salary of that job with Jean's supervision. The timing of Jean's accident was unfortunate. We had just lost the, uh, part-time assistant city clerk that we had hired, and we're filling in with temporary people. Granted, there have been some mistakes and errors, some omissions, but none that were life-threatening or really detrimental to our policies here. Uh, I am in favor of keeping the position at part-time, and let's try it again for another year. Certainly sure that the mayor will revisit this, whether it's this mayor or another mayor, in next year's, uh, budget process. So, I will just stand my case again. I argued it last year, I argued it, argued it in the committee meeting, and I'll argue it again. The position is working fine, part-time. I don't see any sense in changing it to full-time. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor. Now, the position, the position is working fine. When it's working, the problem is that it's working three days a week for about four hours a day. So, we're getting about twelve hours, um, from the assistant paid position. I'm not, I'm not going to vote the city, I'm not going to be an actual staff. We've got twenty-one volunteers up here who get paid nothing. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'm gonna hold you to that. Uh, we represent about seventy-five thousand people in Danbury, and they call us, and they should call us, because we've been voted here by them, representing the Deer Hill, but we need a little bit of support downtown in Deer Hill. A packet of questions, lots of things. There's an awful lot of ad-hoc's that we're all on that we're not actually on, and we very often sit in. Most of us, uh, uh, we're on one or two, uh, budget committees, but most of us here, like all of them, we need information on when they're scheduled. There's overlapping committees, lots of things. I, I very often sit in on planning meetings and zombie meetings and other meetings like that, and I need the information. It puts an awful lot of pressure on the staff that they have in the city. So, while I respectfully have to disagree with my esteemed colleague, Mr. President, uh, we, we tried it for a year. In my opinion, it's not working, and we need to go back to a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would like to echo the words of our esteemed President, Councilman Cabo. Uh, it's, I agree with him, the office is, is working very well. Uh, we have two of our part-time people here. Uh, Jeanette is to be committed to the work as well as our city clerk has been out for, how long has Jeanie been out? Three months. Uh, and the work was getting done with the help of many people. And finally, I'd like to add that it's very rare in government that we get to decrease the amount of people that work in government. I believe right now that, uh, the city of Danbury is the city's largest employer. Is that correct? Whatever the board of education, close to it. So, okay. But it's very rare that we can decrease the amount of people that we have in government. This is a chance, and, and we're maximizing our efficiencies, and, uh, I see no reason to add the position back to full-time. Thank you.
I've been here twelve years, and I will tell you, it was an accident that Jeanie was out for three months. And you know what? I have seen these people pull together. Uh, we have had such wonderful people. Everybody came forward. There was nobody in this town that did not come forward. And as a matter of fact, you all know, I get a lot of phone calls. And when people had a problem, they couldn't reach the, the assistant city clerk or they got somebody, they would call. That, that's, that's our job as council people. We're supposed to be here to answer questions. A lot of times, people will call me because they don't wanna bother the city clerk or the town clerk. They call me. And you know what? That's part of our job. And I think the last three months, we missed Jeanie terribly, yes, because she does so much. But she goes above and she's back now, and I say, let's, let's try it again. I don't think we needed it. We had, we have two great people, or people who were filling in. They did a fantastic job. And I don't think we need a full-time, uh, secretary. And I do know that in the last six years before this, there were a lot of times when there wasn't that much to do either, even with a full-time person. So, you know what? We've got the part-time. We said we're gonna try part-time. It's working. I say, keep doing it.
Wow. I'm gonna echo my own words. Is that all right? Um, I know we've been here a long time tonight, but I, I know way, shape, or form was I doing anything against the current city clerk, because she does everything at the job. And I, I would never say anything but that. I'm just trying to get her some full-time help rather than part-time position. Uh, you, you can just see the stack of papers that we have here, and we need stuff during the week, and a lot of times it's unavailable. Granted, Jeanie has been out. I'm glad she's back. Glad to see her here. And that's the only reason that I wanted to get this position to a, a full-time position, to, to help, uh, everyone concerned. Thank you.
That was Naggership, no? Johnson?
No.
Traumetta?
No.
Caladrina?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Miss Gundy?
Yes.
Chenez?
Yes.
Esposito?
Yes.
Cabo?
No.
Basso?
No.
Patel?
Yes.
Dees? Consummus?
No.
Royal?
No.
Cerrosino?
Yes.
Seaberry?
No.
Stanley?
No.
Deverset?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I know that you did expect I would have some remarks, so I'd be very pleased if you would allow me to make them. Thank you very much. Yes, I did raise my hand. I'm sorry you didn't see it right away. Um, this has been an interesting budget process. We got the budget, um, early. We got it on March sixth. Uh, there was a public hearing at which four people spoke. They're probably here this evening, too. Uh, there were six ad hoc committee meetings that department heads didn't attend. Um, it was the Dina Show, and our former finance director really did a first-rate job presenting a budget. And it's a budget that's not much different than the budget that I voted against last year, but she did a good job. What bothers me is that the budget process this year was really set at ramming speed. Uh, it was fourteen days and we were done. And that was without the benefit of having the first quarter, uh, sales and income tax figures from the state, uh, without seeing what changes the appropriations committee might make to the governor's proposed budget on the April twentieth. I know we always use the governor's budget figures, uh, but this year there ought to be alarm bells for us, um, with her budget. Uh, never mind that the Democrats have a veto-proof majority in Hartford. Um, there isn't any Republican support for the governor's budget either. In fact, I think that Sal Pascarella and myself are the only two people in Danbury who support the governor's budget. You do, Your Honor. That's wonderful. Um, so our, our city's, uh, general fund budget is really kind of built on quicksand, and, uh, we might as well have used a Ouija board and maybe saved some of the paper that it was printed on. But it's very likely that there will be wholesale changes in ninety days that we will revisit as a council. And I know that, um, Republicans on the council will ignore all of these warning signs and will rubber stamp, uh, the mayor's budget proposal, even though by charter, I believe we have until May fifteenth. I know someone said May first, but I think by charter, we have until May fifteenth to approve or reject it. In fact, I think that some members of the council will even rise to claim that this is the best budget that has ever been presented in the three-hundred-year history of our city. Uh, but it's not the best budget. It has shortcomings, it has waste, and it has duplication. And, uh, especially when it concerns the legislative body, the common council, it is underfunded. Uh, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars isn't adequate to serve, uh, the public or the twenty-one members who are elected to the council. Um, do you wanna know what your council is doing? Uh, do you wanna know when the next constituents' meeting is? Uh, do you wanna know how to reach your council member? Well, you can call the common council office at seven nine seven four five one four, and someone will assist you ten and a half hours a week. Now, if you miss that vote, um, you can actually go online to the city website and try to find the information that you need. Um, now, if you don't have any internet access and you're a member of the public, um, you can dial up, uh, three one one, which is our, our new call center, and they will be happy to refer you to the closed common council office, uh, to seek that information. But, um, very seriously, a city budget, uh, shows what our priorities are, and I think it's obvious in this budget, that the legislative body, the common council itself, for the city of Danbury is not a priority. It isn't. We're giving the Ives Center for the Performing Arts fifty thousand dollars in transition funding to start their new season. Fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we're paying forty-six thousand dollars to be members of C C M, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Uh, we're giving Dan Bartram a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar tax break for his new dormitory at Thirty Crosby Street. And yet, when in the government one ad hoc committee, Councilman Saudi proposed making that part-time position full-time, it was voted down, three to two. What this says, uh, really, very loud and clear, is that when you have a strong mayor to set policy and a very well-run call center for the public, well, the common council just really isn't important at all. In fact, it's superfluous. And maybe what we need to do is revisit our city charter and eliminate it altogether. I'm, um, also disappointed in the mayor's failure to keep his kind of state-of-the-city commitment about public access broadcasting. Now, I know, Your Honor, um, you promised that we would have public access broadcasting of council meetings and land use meetings, I believe. You said by March, and it's April. And we're adopting our city budget, and Danbury's eight hours of broadcasting on the government access channel twenty-four aren't being used. And you may be secretly hard at work on this issue, but we've had no ad hoc committee reports from, um, Mr. Cabo, who I believe is the chair of that ad hoc committee. Um, I'm disappointed again this year in the grant agency review process. Uh, two years ago, Vinnie Nolan said we had to take the politics out of these decisions, and we haven't. This year, the funding for the Hispanic Center was allocated to the Wheels Program and to T B I Co. We're using these grants like candy in a candy dish to reward or punish social service agencies, and that's wrong. We ought to fund agencies based on how important the services they provide are to Danbury residents. And I think this year in particular, the AIDS project of Greater Danbury was done a great disservice. Inadvertently, Mr. Riley told them that their funding request for fourteen thousand would be funded through the interfaith AIDS ministry, and it won't be. Um, their program was zero budgeted. And the mayor explained at the same council meeting that we couldn't fund any new programs, and we're funding two. We're funding the Bounty Street Y and the Green Homes Community Center. So, the grant agency review process isn't fair, and it isn't equitable. And, and it ends up being the mayor's personal philanthropy put into the city budget, and I don't think that's right. Uh, the other area that I looked for in the budget and couldn't find was a wonderful two hundred and fifty dollar energy tax credit for the elderly. Um, Democrats requested an ad hoc committee for, to expand tax relief for the elderly in June of, May of two thousand and six. So, this is an issue that our caucus really supports. Now, I know the mayor said that this tax credit would apply to households of up to fifty-eight thousand dollars in annual income, and that's very generous. So, if everyone who is currently in the circuit breaker or the fees program applied for this program, we'd be spending a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And that's much bigger than a breadbasket. And it wasn't in, uh, it wasn't the budget address on March sixth, but it's not in our budget. The tax collector couldn't find it, and the assessor couldn't find it. I'm afraid it's vanished, so I hope that the mayor, in his comments, will clarify on that point. And, uh, finally, I'd like to close with kind of a Passover remembrance that I've kind of adapted, because this city has had such a long history of tolerance and inclusion. And it goes like this. Um, first, they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for the day laborers, and I did not speak out because I was not a day laborer. Then they came for the Hispanic Center funding, and I didn't speak out because I was not Hispanic. Then they underfunded the school budget by a million dollars, and I did not speak out because I do not have any school-aged children. And then they took the welfare department apart, and I did not speak out because I am not on welfare. And then they came and told me that this was a good budget, and I said, no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you very much. I'm from Tabersek. I want to be the first one to say that this is an excellent budget. She knew I would say that. And the second thing I'd like to say right away is that, I'll, I'll speak for myself rather than to speak for other people. I never rubber stamped a thing in my life. I'd be damned if I ever would. I'm a former Marine. We don't do things like that. And, there you go. But, I, I really truly would like to say that with regard to this budget, we have given to the taxpayer of Danbury, we're giving them a little bit of a increase, less than one mil, somewhere around six tenths, forty dollars at, at most, per year. And if you look around the different communities and towns, they're looking at And if you look around the different communities and towns, they're looking at three, four, five hundred dollar increases. Not only that, we are, we are taking, we are expanding our fire department, which is critical because if you truly, truly want to help all people, you need to be able to respond at the given time, wherever, for all ethnic groups. And we, we have now also, in the budget, placed money so that we will be able to fund more police, police officers, so we have more vehicles on the roads, so that we could begin to make sure that all of us in this great city are safe. So we're also doing a lot of nice things in terms of homelessness, veterans. You know, it's kind of nice to help veterans. I believe in that whole, whole heartily. And I think those are important things. But, but again, to end it up, it's a, it's a great budget. We put a lot of time into this, and we get paid an awful lot of money. I'm hoping tonight that maybe I can get paid two, two slices of pizza, and I'm not going to say beer, but I'm going to, and a couple of nice bottles of beer. And if I get paid that for a whole year, thank you very much. It's great, okay? And the last thing I'd just say is that on the grant agencies, I thought that as the chair, I thought it was a process that, that worked very well because I had sat down and I drafted a letter and I sent it out to all agencies, all committee members, and so that people knew when the meeting was going to be held. I asked them if they liked to come, please come, and bring whatever documentation you might need, okay, to present your case. At the same token, we cannot expect that one would come from an agency in all due respect of all agencies, and, and they would say things like, yes, they even know from their board that things are out of control, and that, "Do you really mind if we cut back a little bit this year?" Certainly not. So, I mean, we can't give away taxpayers' money when we are so willing to give grant money and just say, "You should possibly illegally." So I think we did a real great job on that. I commend all of us here, and I learned how man in arms rightly so. Thank you for your comments, but it is a great budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm not going to take the, as, as a period of time, Mr. Rada, but I, I agree with him wholeheartedly. The twenty-one members of this council have been off a lot of hours in, many, many meetings, talked to many, many people around the city. This is indeed a good budget, and I think we've done tremendous jobs to, to the constituents of Danbury, and I fully, wholeheartedly support it. Thank you, Senator.
Your Honor, do you just bear with me for just a moment? No, I just listened to Mrs. Tavasack's speech, and I just, I'm just amazed at the half-truths and the innuendos that she had, and it was incredible, just typical Tavasack fashion. And I mean that in utmost respect. This budget process went very smoothly. The four that I've been involved with, it has gone really no different than any of the others. The time is there, the committees were there, the questions were there, the committee members were there. And I want to thank all of the opinions, all the meetings that you did, you weren't required to be at. You asked great questions, and most people could see by the reports that I read, probably three of the five. Five out of the six committees reported out unanimously in support of the budget, and tremendous amount of questions were asked, and people elaborated, I think, very well. And Mrs. Tavasack may have felt rushed, but it didn't seem anything better than you did with me in the last four. So I just wanted to ask you if you could just give us a clarification on energy tax credit for seniors that are here.
Sure. If you look through the budget, you'll know, you won't see energy tax credit for veterans. You don't see a tax credit for veterans. You won't see one for seniors. That's because we don't account for our tax credit programs in our budget. We fund those tax credit programs as our supplemental grantings, which we collect after our tour versus the following year. That pool of money is about a million dollars that we collected to order vehicles during that time. So while somebody says that it's not included, it doesn't mean that it's funded. We use that pool of money to fund all of our tax credit programs, all the procedures, and the benefits of the state approach, everybody that's eligible to give advantage of that. I will say to you that part of the discussion of our home managers to ask those questions and get those answers, or it's not a valid question, I, I remember both of the things that people want to call the mayor's office and use. Say, "Where is this money?" And I was, I was, I was happy to answer those questions, but as a result, I think it started happening that way. But at the end of the day, we'll be able to provide that energy tax relief for seniors. Our voluntary period will start soon, with that the ad hoc, which I prefer to call a standard, where we can answer that, if you're ready, to give, uh, provide that to the children.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would be remiss not to give my opinion on this, because, well, I do not necessarily agree with Councilwoman Tavasack or agree with the other councilmen's opinions as well. As you probably know by these committee reports, I probably attended most of the budget committee meetings, and I probably asked the most questions. And I do believe that the only stupid question is the question not asked, which is why I ask so many questions, just to get it on the record of, of the, of the committee meetings. And during this process, I did see firsthand of the impact that the mayor wants, and I have to say that one of the best impacts that I see in this whole budget process is I would have to give a kudos to the Public Works Department. I think during that whole session, which was probably one of the longest committee reports given tonight, I think that is probably one of the most significant changes that I've seen in my three, three years here, and I think it's probably been very successful. And I want to congratulate them on a fantastic job done on it, which is why during our committee, it was supported unanimously because it was a well-thought-out, well-prepared. And I think the city as a whole will benefit from that process. And I wish that all the departments take that lead to look at what changes they can make to make their departments more efficient and more better so we don't have to keep going back and keep giving you more money throughout the whole year. So again, thank you for that, for that, for that, um, for that work that you did do. So my question is, again, is really reading, why, again, one, one of my opinions here now is, we're asking, we're answering this question, we're asking, "Will I call for this budget tonight or not?" I guess the fact that we felt like we were being rushed, that we don't have firm numbers. And, you know, one of the questions is, I really don't know firm numbers in the government. There are some estimates in here. In accounting, when you do projections, there are estimates, and I do believe that, that you need some estimates in your budget, and that's why it's a budget. But my question always falls back to how the fund balance impacts this current budget, and it does. In this current budget, and this is my question again asked to the Assistant Finance Director, the mayor, the mayor could also interject a little bit on this. During the, I think currently, what I understand is what we have on record that we have a twenty-three million dollar fund back, I think, give or take, a little bit more. Currently, we have three point six million dollars that's going to be allocated from this budget to that fund balance. And there's also this evening, we gave out three hundred and forty thousand dollars from that budget. So the way I add it up, we have about nineteen million dollars that's currently in our fund balance that we can currently see. You know, I know that can change throughout the year, but right now, right at this moment, we have nineteen million dollars. And I know the bonding rate is heavily impacted on what our fund balance is. I asked this question to you during, during today, and you responded that, that we need to give at least a ten percent, which gives us about nineteen million dollars. So at our current funding level, at nineteen million, we're going to be able to support our bonding level, our A-rating that we have. So my question would be is, what if the governor does not give us the support that we have in this budget? What are we planning on doing, how are we going to make it for that shortfall, given the fact that I don't think, I don't believe at this point we have much room in the fund balance? So my question to the mayor would be, during the next fiscal year, would you go into the fund balance again to remove the funds necessary to make up for the shortfall in this current budget?
Well, let me speak to that first of all. As we sit here today, we have twenty-three million dollars spent on that program. We have to use that for the year, for the fund balance. In this current fiscal year, we project using approximately twenty-three million dollars for our current budget, up to two thirty million dollars. Based on our projected expenditure, we won't use a three million dollars. We'll probably use something around here, two hundred thousand dollars if that was possible. That means we roll over an additional two point seven million dollars in the next fiscal year. So we close out the books in February, two thousand and seven. We should have approximately twenty-three million dollars plus where we go over. Now we go back, we go down the following year. If we don't spend it, we're going to continue to stay in the fund balance, as we need it. Revenue's all short, because there's a potential downside. Maybe it's not the first one, then we would have to move it back a little, make it a million dollars up. So, of course, it would actually be there. It all depended how we handle this fiscal year to close out, right? Because I mean, surplus, yeah, and the fourth year on the road, the surplus lots will probably place back into fund balance. And so they have to go with that. Beyond that, the question, the question asked, what's the plan if legislature doesn't come through the balance and the governor's vote? I think the legislature would be watching education, well, for children. However, we don't have a concrete reality. The commission, the, 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 we've recorded out, Danbury's seen a high level of sixty million dollars, which probably have a thousand dollar cost of education, age, and check, of the governor's vote. In addition to that, the legislature would probably store money that we lost. Private money, grants on the road, kind of, but we've undercut. And we've got a couple of hands you gave to the other people, right? So at the end of the day, I'm not so clear. Parkets, yes, and then that's a, to be, to be, to be also a government, to be, to be, to start the process as they want. I understand the question, is, are you going to use this, the governor's numbers, to use this quality of government? I understand that the question is, are you going to use this, the governor's numbers, to use this wall of government? The good ones and the education ones and the bad ones, like both said, and the other, and the bad ones, and the category for the cut, for the protections. So, so what happened potentially is, again, what you say with us, uh, we may have to move some money about how people lie or want. Do you count the surplus laws and the silverbacks, the days of the final number we get out of, uh, our, uh, legislation? Let me just say, maybe we get the same vote for maintenance, it wouldn't matter, we did the budget now, and we live for one more month. Uh, somebody mentioned sales, we used to match revenues, we have absolutely no care, uh, obviously, uh, it's, uh, fully free, answer very well, processes. I've never heard this discussed, so I was used to the hours that the state generates anyways, we can hear, we do a little pop off. It, so at the end of the day, we can still be driving this conversation, depending on whether the file number is hard or hard. Really doesn't matter, we don't have to do the fact. I like to use the March, March of the last, and stuff like that, because it's, it's a hard look. You know, a lot of the years in time with parks, there are more days in March than our name, but do you realize? In the past, we always use April, but less days in April. We have the day, March, asking questions, departments, we have multiple committee meetings when necessary. So if you'd like to give the question, the plan is, depending on whether the file numbers are recent by June sixth, that we will discuss in the session. We'll make an analysis of that, we'll help you, we'll keep the progress, we'll make a review. We will have not, that we're really, really good position. We really, we not want to fly down on funding dollars anymore, and, uh, we have our own revenue accounts. Uh, we take any more outside dollars, dollars that we can. So the appropriation we're using here will be the appropriation, whatever the issue is.
Thank you, Mary, for that, for that clarification. And again, I apologize for that, didn't ask this during committee meetings, but I'm gonna ask it again now, because I just remember that. A constituent came to me during this year, and they asked a question about parking regulations, about the, um, fees to enter the parks. And that, because I remember, because I grew up in the city, we used to get those little buttons that allowed us to get into the parks free. And then myself having no children, not aware, but she told me that that's no longer being done. So my question is, is it being done, I mean, or is it these kids, I think it's grade school children, are they still allowed in the parks? Or are you a little bummed that some of them do that?
I asked the, I asked the same question, I started to review. I started to review sort of thinking, are they, uh, I don't know when it stops, when it stops, uh, I have no need to play.
Okay.
The town park does generate, uh, 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 uh.
But again, the question that she, again, is following up, because this is an important issue to her. I mean, she's being a low income person, she really can't afford to send her children to the town park, but she can't afford to go in. So my, my, I mean, my question, which we can take, hopefully on the rec, on, we address this, but I think it's an important issue that we need to at least address, some type of funding to allow low income house, low income people to use our parks. Because, I mean, I don't know, with the five dollars, for some, that's a lot of money. And if they can't use the park, it's really not giving service to these. So I would at least recommend to the council that we at least address this issue. I guess it's not appropriate to do it this evening, but I think resolving this backup. So hopefully you can start looking into it a little bit further.
I don't know, I can't use the forty million dollars, I have no ability to pass, to see, uh, to handle it all, so I'm sure. So if we could make a look at it and see if some kind of policy, maybe, uh, it's supposed to be fine.
Just one more comment, um, following up with, um, Councilman Riley's regarding the budget, uh, process on the grants. Um, I know we brought this up last year, which is why we moved to a separate, um, committee just for budgets. And it was at that point in time about duplication of services. It was mentioned a few months ago, it was mentioned again at the budget hearing here, and I would ask this council again to again consider taking a look at the whole grant process to prevent duplication of services to where we can come up with a better way of issuing the grants that'll be apt to take the political end of it, where all, uh, agencies can benefit equally and then after the money is used to benefit the city as a whole. Thank you, Mary.
You know, everybody had enough, too, many people talked about duplication of actors, they had a whole set problem. Nobody ever made things, aren't your classmates, your classmates, your neighbors, either? That's the reason why they stopped, they were just, they were just, they just, um, they're just getting, the shareholders, who is doing that, so we can look at that and then do our actions. I think that we can actually, uh, to manage within, it's like duplication of actors. And the thing is, we have been, we had a discussion about duplication of, people wanting to get agency money. And so if they roll it out, folks, you know, they, they can act the way they want, so I think that if the council has enough to, uh, also, um, really delve into that, look at that on a very serious case by case basis, make the pay, uh, funding people, do you extract that money from their, uh, agency compensation? We got the capacity, you know, so.
Your Honor, I'd like to move to the question.
Motion to make the question, to the second, to Mary, the question, the main motion, the debate. Was in favor of, the big question, was in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
To the opposition. The, you know, the negative, like, this time, that means it's a purpose of the negative, so it's, uh, it's, uh, it's. The question that now we're down to the main motion, was in favor of adopting the two thousand and seven, two thousand and twenty, was in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
The most in the house, say aye?
Aye.
I guess we do a change, we can focus, now it's, uh, so, uh, uh.
An ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for public improvements in the two oh seven, two oh eight capital budget and authorizing the issuance of five hundred thousand dollar bonds of the city to meet said appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
You're pulling out, you're asking yourself.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move to adopt the ordinance and two five hundred thousand dollars worth of notes to fund the various capital projects outlined in the test resolution.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, uh, the best discussion. Uh, my, most in favor, is in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
The most in the house, say aye? Is in favor of the motion, here, in the next, is higher points, is in, uh, set up? Okay, now, fifty seven, now, for the question.
Uh, I think we need to make a resolution, uh, one of the C four M. Mayor Harvey, bound in the area of West Valley, check for your review, is a resolution that allows City of Danbury Public Library to apply for a set funding to the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars to City Center and State Library. This funding will be needed for the new city, use full fill program, which will run from seven, one, oh, seven, two, six, thirty, oh, eight, and provide parents that share their tools, vehicles, tool, reading skills, to the school, each children. The local management, point, our consent is required with the grant, but it's available in two sets, two ways, library operating budget, and the deep time access. That's a copy, bring it location, it's a great, we agree. Now, come to the question, is this, is this, uh, uh?
Uh, your counsel, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, approve the resolution, authorizing City of Danbury Public Library to apply for and accept a grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents from, uh, State Library.
Sir.
May I second the counsel, there's a question, please answer that.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, through you to the Assistant Finance Director, could you tell me what line item the two thousand and fifty is, uh, coming out of in the library budget?
I don't have the individual line item, but that will be coming out of the general fund.
I, I believe it says it's coming out of the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight library operating budget, you don't know what line item?
Not, not, uh, line by line, it depends.
Did you get that information too?
Sure, it depends on services that they, they provide.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution, the rainfall, public shelter, will mark out, who's from Danbury area. The check for your review is a resolution that allows City of Danbury House, housing, and local markets to apply for a set funding from the veterans and players of the state, to the city public shelter. This is a credit grant, but it's not a quarter of the local tax, but it'd be in the order, if you're using five beds in the local, that would, the county council would request to consider this resolution.
What is your counsel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution to apply to grant resources from the Veterans Administration for use in the home shelter.
Second, I'd like to, is there any discussion about, uh?
Thanks, Your Honor, two brief questions, one, if the shelter is, it's nine o'clock, it's seven o'clock, it's getting ready to close, and there are three or four veterans' beds still available, and there are no veterans to sleep in them, but not better than life. Can they, in cases like that, use them to number two? Let's face it, a lot of these guys don't have ID, how, how are, how are these shelter people supposed to know if their veterans are not an actual, thank you? Did you hear what?
Um, absolutely, the, the, by definition, per diem means that they will cover per rate reimbursement when the bed is used. So if the bed is available and not being used, and there's people that are non-veterans, yes, they can absolutely use the bed.
I see.
Will not turn the over.
And then the second part of the question was, how would you know they were veterans through this per, this reimbursement?
Beautiful thing about this program will strengthen the partnerships at all levels with the, with the Veterans Administration. So in the past, we just had somebody who came in this morning, or last evening, they did not have a Connecticut ID, but they did have a veteran's ID, and we were able to confirm it before they even checked into the shelter. So those things will all be streamlined, um, and facilitated.
O- okay, if I, if I can follow up, say he doesn't have any ID, he was rolled or something like that, and he doesn't have any ID, what, but he says he's a veteran, what do you do?
We're gonna work it out.
Okay. Thanks, that's fun.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, through you to the Welfare Director. The, um, program says that, uh, we're gonna provide transitional housing services for up to five veterans close to the outpatient clinic at seven Germantown Road. Now, our existing homeless shelter is actually on New Street, which isn't very close. Is this grant to provide housing in the Osborne Street Germantown area?
No, we have, we have a transportation that can get people to the, to the clinic, so I'm sorry, there was a miswriting, um.
It's not, it's not transitional housing, what you're doing is just reserving five beds in our existing shelter?
No, we were going to expand the program in order to be eligible for the per diem and to change and, I, um, based on the identified needs from the ten year plan to end homelessness, we're gonna change those beds to include, to be transitional beds. So that they won't have that thirty day limit, if they're enrolled in services, they're, um, receiving treatment, that they're not gonna be just kicked back into the streets, that we now have an enhanced program. Because there truly is a need, when you look around the state, look at where the programs are, this area is severely underrepresented. Um, and by increasing the five beds to transitional housing.
I was just asking about the location.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm sorry. Um, it's eleven o'clock, so, you know. We will then be able to bring in more partnerships and services from the VA.
Yes, so the, the five beds are not on Osborne Street or Germantown Road?
No, they are issued.
Uh, one additional question, um, these, I take it are federal funds?
Correct.
So that any veteran, veteran from New York, veteran from Georgia?
Well, that's what some of, we'll have to figure out with the contracts, once, you know, if we're funded, those are the things that we'll have to work out.
And, um, one additional question, um, you said that if the reserved beds were not needed for the veterans, they could be filled by other people?
Well, that's how it is right now.
Would the per diem be reduced?
We, by the definition of per diem, you're paid by the veteran being in the bed. So if the veteran's not in the bed, currently, those five beds that we open up during the winter months are unfunded by our current sources. So this would be additional funding, when we have the veterans in the beds.
Uh, through you, Your Honor, so we're not guaranteed a hundred and fifty bucks a day for a year? We have to come up with the bodies.
And we absolutely, I mean, through our point in town, count in surveys, twenty percent of our homeless individuals are veterans. And we can see it already in our HMIS system.
Thank you, Your Honor, just, uh, just for my benefit, and maybe some other council people. How many beds are in the New Street, like, fire marshal, what?
We have a certi, we have a CO for twenty beds.
How many of those are currently, like, rent has to be used, like, by DSS?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, DSA pays for fifteen?
Correct.
Those five extra beds can be used for anybody who, who walks in, how those extra five beds can be used?
You mean now, or if we receive the funding?
No, no.
Well, now, when we expand through the winter time, therefore, anybody who comes in that is in need of services.
And so, once this grant approved, those extra five beds can be used strictly for, for veterans?
If we had the bodies, correct.
If you, okay.
Right, or should say, when we have the bodies.
Oh, they would have for priority, and that, so if you had fifteen, if you had seventeen, if you had twenty-one people who want to get in there. So those five veterans would have priority over that extra one person.
Correct, and that's what the beauty of our partnerships with Dorothy Day and also the overflow, we're able to accommodate those people during that time.
Any discussion? See, doesn't that, I'm sorry, my, most in favor, is in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Resolution, park dial ride. You want a more march back room from Danbury area? Check for your, your review is a resolution of authorizing the Housatonic area regional transit, which is Schreiner to negotiate all necessary agreement slash contract documents. And we have the City of Danbury Department of Transportation of the State of Connecticut for the elderly and disabled, demand responsive transportation expanded program. No City Magistry question, Council House is requesting to consider this resolution in its next meeting. If you have any questions or require any further information, please contact my office.
Mr. Counselor?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, approve the resolution allowing the Housatonic area regional transit of Richard Schreiner authority to negotiate and execute the necessary agreements and or contracts on behalf of the City of Danbury with the State Department of Transportation for the elderly and disabled, demand responsive transportation expanded program.
May I second the counsel, has any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. How much is this grant worth? Dollar.
Yes, the grant amount is sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Five thousand of that amount goes to the Wheels program.
Report, impact statements.
Honor. I would make a motion, that we wait the reading of this, since we all have it here.
May I, may I read this on members of Congress, second, uh, uh, for the, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh, say aye?
Aye.
May I, thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and take the action. May I second, receive the report and take the action, which is, discussion, which is.
Thank you, Your Honor. In, in reading this, I think, this report, uh, my question would be to, um, to the Director of Planning, is there supposed to be a page to? No? So it just ends, just like that?
Thank you, Your Honor, through you to the, um, Director of Planning. Um, are, are you suggesting that developers can give us some good unbiased impact statements about projects that they'd like us to approve?
No, um.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do you want to elaborate any answers?
Well, you can ask for data, you know, hard facts, that kind of thing. But what you need is somebody who takes that and interprets it, reads it, interprets it, comes to conclusions, that's what you need.
And through you, Your Honor, do we?
They're highly guaranteed.
Yes.
Like, so many of our traffic impact analyses, their conclusion will be that, I don't think much.
Uh, then through you, uh, Your Honor, do we have such a person, uh, in our planning department?
No, no. And you're talking about, this kind of a special, uh, here. You're talking about taking, as this was sent to us, submission of periodic impact statements from the various public safety departments, uh, fire police, emergency medical, and hydrate. And I can't believe that, uh, typically it's looking the other way around. Um, and they would have it in the department. I mean, you don't have it.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right, let me stand. I guess the whole purpose of my, of all this impact statement is for this council to get a better feeling of what's happening in our city. So the question here is not for the planning commission to give the reports, but us as a council to get this report. So when, when there's a development that may have happened throughout our city, I mean, we can go to the Fire Marshal and he can give us a report that, yes, that the building X, Y, and Z, that his needs are being apparently met, and we know what those needs are. So the purpose of these impact statements is not for the planning commission, it's for us as a council, so we can get a feeling that our city is properly being addressed by, that the public safety department have what they need to do their jobs.
Yeah, but it's not a simple set.
Why not? It's a simple request from them, it's their opinion. That's why we're asking.
That's right, and I will be agree at this late hour. What kind of information will be required? What criteria will be used? Who will evaluate the data? How will it impact our review process? And what will be the practical results of such a process?
Well, that's a.
I'll answer those questions first.
Well, then that's a violation. I think this should need to go on an ad hoc, maybe so as a committee we can address those issues. But definitely, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna have.
Cannot turn down votes. This is going to cost more than we've projected, under state.
That we, as a council, we need to know that, so we do when we do our budgets. As a council, we would know that we need more of retrograde behaviors.
So that's what we made our plans.
But then, but we need that communication here, that's the whole purpose of these impact statements. Yet the work is already being done through your applications, the simple request is that give us copies in their monthly reports of that, and that could be a simple solution to this, to the problem. May I?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and defer this back to the existing head of the board.
Report, sanitary source, customer trial, qualified, with trials, subject, tried, and prior release laws.
Thank you, Your Honor. Although I applaud Mr. Chee's efforts, I would like to make a motion at this time that we receive the reports and take no action.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the whole purpose of, again, this was not through me, this was through my constituents, through me, because basically their question, it was a simple question, and I couldn't answer that question for them. And I'm gonna inject this to the Public Works Director, and I'm sure he has a wonderful idea of how to address this issue. But the question is, and I think every council member has, probably once dealt with this question, I need sewers, why do I gotta wait fifteen years for time I get a sewer? And it's frustrating to them, it's frustrating to us, and it's frustrating to the city. So I'm gonna give it to the, Antonio, I'm sure he has the answer to the question.
Sure, I'm gonna try to keep this brief. I addressed some of these issues there in my budget presentation. The mayor had asked me, pretty early in my tenure, to look into this process, to find out if there was any way to expedite, to find out where the roadblocks were. I'm in the process right now, trying to get my hands around the process. I've done quite a bit of work with it, I've had some discussions with you about it. There's gotta be a better way to do this. I don't have the answer right now, but I am looking into it. I am, with my current budget proposal, I am going to dedicate one person full-time to not only having communications with the general public, but with you guys on where these projects are. Can I give you an answer where your project is? It's sixteen out of thirty-one, thirty-nine projects? I can't today, based on the current process that we have. So that needs to change. We cannot have a zero answer for the public when they ask these types of questions. But the only way to fix that is to improve the process and base some timelines, so we can move it ahead.
So I guess the question, which is again, in your, before a report here on Jackson Drive, this is the number one here. So October fourth nineteen ninety-four, and spring two thousand seven, when you talk fifteen years, to you that's very unacceptable, and you're thinking a year from now, those type of delays won't occur?
I think it's unreasonable for a city to be implementing a project that this council approved in nineteen ninety-four. That's my personal opinion, I think it's the opinion of my entire staff. But we are, we really have to study this process that has been developed over the last twenty-five years. There's been things that have been added to it, there's things that have been deleted. I don't think everybody's, anybody's done a comprehensive look at the administrative process and what we can do to improve it. There were some communications in the file in two thousand and three, somebody attempted to look at it, but it didn't go any further.
Let me just say that the problem now, we have so many projects, it's huge.
Oh, it's, it's grown.
Your Honor, I, I, I know, I know.
Play motorola.
I, okay, motorola. And Tommy, I wanted to mention on the report you added to this, I mean, our growth report nineteen ninety-four, Jackson Drive, we only okayed last year. I mean, I think it's phenomenal what you have put in here so that we know what is going on. And I think this is a big, big process that you went through, and I wanna, and I wanna thank you for it.
And I tell you, the city engineer and his staff, they realize, just like I do, that there's, there has to be a better way to do this. They have done everything to prepare and, and get all of the administrative work done, so we can study the process. And that's really what we need to do over the next six months, is really study that process.
Through the chair, you know, another thing is, I've been on the council twelve years, so I have seen things that have been brought up a time and time and time again, and the people kept knocking it down. But we did change a law a couple of years ago that you, if you put in for it, you knock it down, you can't come back for five years. That helped us, so that now everybody wants it. We got about ninety-five, I think.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and take no action at this time.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to beg the council's indulgence to send this to an ad hoc meeting. I appreciate the report that Attorney Gotchalk returned recently. It turns out that in a game of pin the tail on the donkey, the state statutes kind of cover every single thing except the center request, which is to restrict the use of hands-free telephones on buses. The state statute does not address it, it addresses handheld phones, it addresses accessories for handheld phones, it does not address hands-free phones, the use of hands-free phones on school buses, that's objection number one. Objection number two, there's a question as to whether the municipalities have the authority to regulate this in first place, and there's a statute from nineteen forty-one that might suggest that it doesn't, that it's closer to inspection. They're really talking about equipment that's attached to cars, like lights and brakes and things like that. So it looks like we've got the authority to do this. And then finally, and I don't want to get into the big deal about this, because the final thing is that the state statutes do not even address at all passing licenses, commercial licenses. So we've, we've got, we've got a little bit of work to do to get through with this, and Attorney Gotchalk and I are pretty confident that in an ad hoc, we can hammer this out without too much trouble. Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept this report and approve the recommendations of the place to refer to a public turn.
Ad hoc report, First Night Day hearing, Thursday, March eighth, two thousand seven. Chairwoman Jane Diggs called the meeting to order at six thirty PM on Thursday, March eighth, two thousand seven, in the caucus room, Thursday, Danbury City Hall, one fifty-five Deer Hill Avenue. Present were committee members Ted, Sumpes, and Paula Tella. Also present were Assistant Finance Director Dan Garrett, City Center Representative Andrea Vargas de Barra, Nancy McAvoy, Treasurer of First Night Danbury, Nick Hoffman, or Member of First Night Danbury, and also Debbie Pacific, volunteer coordinator of First Night Danbury. Petitioners were Conway Perkins, John S. Matilde, Paula Tella, Willie Tavershaw, and interested citizens. Chairwoman Diggs explained that the charge of the committee was to repeat and debate recommendations concerning First Night Day hearing and other issues that may arise during these overall discussions. Doing some research on her own, Chairwoman Diggs found that the city of Stanford has not had First Night in many years as a result of a lack of funding volunteers. While the city of Hartford has had First Night in many years, there was a possibility that it might be disbanded due to a lack of volunteers and funding. Chairwoman Diggs was under the impression of City Center of Danbury planned the event, however discovered that First Night was its own entity, a five oh one C three entity on board. Chairwoman Diggs opened the meeting before discussion, comments, and questions. Ms. McAvoy, Ms. McAvoy gave a brief background of First Night. She explained that there is an organization, First Night International, for God, a license fee of three hundred fifty dollars to pay yearly in order to use the name First Night. She pointed out that the changes in the city have put a strain on the event. Attendance has declined for years, and the board has decided to disband this event. Ms. McAvoy explained that First Night was not conducted for two thousand seven due to lack of volunteers and funding. The perception is that the energy has gone out of the First Night event. Ms. Pacific noted the extensive effort she put forth to try and acquire volunteers where they can, and the end, only thirteen volunteers have been secured. Ms. McAvoy pointed out that a minimum of forty volunteers are needed to run First Night event. Mr. Hoffman noted that the two thousand six event was put together as a result of last year's efforts, but ended up being an abbreviated version of previous First Night events. He reminded everyone of the snowstorm that occurred, which all welcomed the overall success of this event. Chairwoman Diggs asked the petitioners why they signed the petition to preserve First Night. Mr. Perkins did not feel the failure of First Night was primarily caused by lack of funding or lack of volunteers, and desired to explore the situation further. Councilman Rotella noted that while the interest in First Night seemed to dwindle, he desired to see First Night continue and urge patience as he felt much of the first generational cycle of First Night had, the generations to follow and continue the First Night tradition, become a stronger presence in the community for many years to come. An example he used was the Fourth of July celebrations. Councilman Rotella commended all those involved in First Night for the fourteen years of dedication to the event. Ms. Tavershaw pointed out that Danbury's economy has benefited as a result of various towns not having a First Night celebration, and as it draws those desires to participate in a First Night celebration to Danbury. She expressed a desire for First Night to continue and suggested involving the Office of Economic Development at City Center and helping to promote this event. Ms. McAvoy pointed out that while First Night has been a separate organization, the executive director of City Center has been member of the board of First Night, and the board has been allowed to be City Center as they record. She pointed out that fifty thousand dollars is needed in order to properly run this event, and as a result of the declining interest, it has proven not to be a wise investment for businesses. City Center Representative Andrea Vargas de Barra noted the need of support. Chairwoman Diggs asked Mr. Vargas to comment on First Night. Mr. Vargas found that anything that draws people to downtown Danbury is one of the syrup. Ms. McAvoy informed, informed the committee that at a recent board meeting, there was a vote to disband the organization First Night, Danbury International, as of April first. As there is interest in retaining a First Night event, Mr. Vargas suggested not disband the five oh one C three, because it takes two years in order to reestablish a five oh one C three, and be eligible for any state funding. Councilman Sumpes asked the First Night representatives why they thought First Night failed. They all agreed it was lack of funding, volunteers, and participants. Ms. McAvoy pointed out that there is a perception that it is dangerous to be in downtown Danbury after bar and the event, just as not attracting enough people to, to participate. Councilman Sumpes asked the petitioners what they desired of the city. Mr. Perkins desired clearly placing new boards to fill the existing five oh one C three, and felt the city could assist by continuing the ad hoc meetings, which went forward, the primary to find new members. Council, Chairwoman Diggs pointed out that First Night is a private entity, and the city does not have jurisdiction over it, and can now find new members to fill the seats on the board. While Councilman Sumpes agreed with the First Night event continuing and knowing the interest in First Night, he did not believe it was a function of the city of Danbury to run First Night, nor could the city of Danbury do a better job of facilitating or getting better First Night organization. Councilman Sumpes, Chairwoman Diggs, and Ms. Tavershaw all volunteered to help the petitioners with their, with their quest of keeping alive the First Night tradition of Danbury. Mr. Vargas suggested charging cities, charging citizens the danger of the task of preserving the event as well. Councilman Rotella suggested continuing the meeting as the issue was complex, complex, and time was a major concern as well. He did, he did not want to see the five oh one C three dissolve. He asked that a consultation with Corporation Counselor take place in order to ascertain whether or not the committee would transfer it to a new board. Ms. McAvoy informed him that the U O C really needed to be paid to First Night International. However, in order to preserve the five oh one C three, three officers would need to exist. A motion was made by Councilman Rotella to continue the ad hoc meeting to explore Corporation Counselor, transference of the shell organization of five oh one C three. The motion died due to a lack of a second. Chairwoman Diggs expressed concern that the event would become an undertaking of city and did not support continuing the commitment. While there were money, while there were money and attendance issues, the lack of interest in First Night might be assigned in the event by case or need. Councilman Sumpes agreed that First Night, as it presently stands, will not be successful, with the desire to succeed. A motion was made by Councilman Sumpes and seconded by Chairwoman Diggs to take no action on the petition of request at this time. Councilman Rotella felt it was premature to table the committee with no action. He felt if no action was taken after meeting, that First Night would cease to exist. Councilman Rotella noted the city had many resources to assist with facilitating the event. Councilman Sumpes asked Ms. Pacific, Mr. Hoffman, and Ms. McAvoy through the chair, and they felt First Night would be successful and viable in Danbury. All three agreed that they would not. The motion carried two words, no vote currently by Councilman Rotella. Motion to adjourn was written up by Councilman Sumpes and seconded by Councilman Rotella. Motion carried unanimously, said fourteen to ten to one. Respectfully submitted, Chairwoman Sumpes involved Rotella.
For giving me the opportunity to address this issue, I'd like to just start off by saying something that Councilman Rotella said at the council meeting. He was one of the people there who actually understood that this is a very complex issue. Concerns things like quality of life, family traditions, and community heritage. I'm gonna just fill like three points to help summarize this, this matter. After I left that meeting, my head was, my head was spinning, not just from the sandbags that land on it, but also from the series of events that played out. I asked a few prodding questions, and I, I just couldn't get a straight answer. It occurred to me later on that there was an elephant in the water. Organizers were dogged by leadership that lacked vision, offered little to no creativity, and could not organize people into effective workers. There's your elephant. Concerning the funding and the volunteers, I spoke with one of the organizers who made a point to explain to me that they could get corporate sponsoring. They don't, you know, tell people that they couldn't, because that's not the case. So again, the worst source of, of funding is owed to them, so that does dispel part of that funding myth. Secondly, volunteers. I, we were told at the meeting that hundreds of emails were sent out to get volunteers. Quite frankly, sending out emails to get volunteers is a very ineffective way to get